Mentioned by orange paper. This is, the open meeting law requires you to advise open session meeting attendees as follows. Open session public meetings are subject to being videotaped. It appears this one is going to be. Your image and voice may be recorded. Okay, folks, do you have some rest or? Thank you Jim for getting these. I guess you do have packages. Okay, we're calling the hearing to order at seven twelve.
I have.
Ten or whatever.
I've provided five new full-size copies of the plans with the requested changes from this core and conservation. So this will be the current permitting set. So I don't know who would like to.
Well, let's pass it out here, but Leeann will get one of our copies, probably mine, because I lose them.
Okay.
I got clear space here, sorry.
One of the reasons we were waiting is it's good to have five people at the table because it increases your chances.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
The whole and the whole size. And a whole bunch of, I don't know how many extra.
Well Jenny's not here, so I'll take.
Oh, little one.
There we go.
You can look at my big looks.
Yeah, I brought, I brought.
The falls in the middle, so.
Do you use your full ones?
Yes.
Oh, goodness, is that broken glasses.
Sir, place where I should sit.
I don't see anyone in the audience presently, so I think that's, is that, that the you, can you?
I'll just move.
You have the wrong word.
Yeah, maybe you could turn it just a little so that he can.
Can I go to run this?
Yes, this is a separate item. We did the special permit, okay? And that's all squared away. Did you, you sent a copy of it, right?
I did it at home. I don't have it with me.
Right, but you got a chance to read it, right? So you know what's in it. This is separate in that it's site plan, so the five people at the table who wrote on it.
Okay.
It's actually a continuation, but we didn't really talk about site plan and it was going to be revised anyways, so, okay.
For the record, Chris Anderson, engineering engineering, here on perhaps DPT Energy Solutions for our solar installation array, sorry. Just a quick overview, we have Randall Road that runs along the, on the westerly property line. The solar array itself will be located in the rear portion of the property. Access to the site will be via gravel access drive, which provide access to both the array and various drainage infrastructure to meet our compliance. There are areas subject to the Wellness Protection Acts and the Berlin Wetland Policy. At this time, we have received our order conditions for the work within the jurisdictional areas.
I don't know what that means.
Under the Wellness Protection Acts.
Okay, all right, so conservation.
Conservation, yes. So anything, any work performed within 100 feet of the.
Wetlands, yeah.
So we have gotten their approval for the work that we're currently.
You didn't find any salamanders or anything, huh?
No. Lot of rock, but, so, this is the general layout of the site. Gravel access drive will run along the northern property line and then drive or dip down into the.
If you could, could you push those chairs back a little? And I think if you could stand to the side, it would be easier for them to have to be seen by anyone who may choose to be up late at night.
So the gravel access drive will run along the northern property line and go towards the south along the westerly edge of the property, which will lead to the proposed burner arrays and detention basin in the lower corner. Per the conversations with the fire department, we have provided a second T turnaround outside of the fence line, so that emergency has to get down into this area that can easily back out without having to go physically into the array.
And you, with the fire chief, and this is acceptable to the emergency folks, right?
Yeah, we actually spoke to him before the meeting. We didn't have the plans updated, but we had a sketch of what we were going to do. We actually showed it on the plan the last meeting we, we had, and we talked to him, and he was happy with that turnaround along with the other stuff that we would propose.
In addition, another comment that the fire chief had was regards to access, access around the array itself. We're proposing constructing a grass access, access path, which will have a stone gravel base lower level with a few inches of long C on top of it. That way we can maintain the grass appearance of everything, but still have the integrity of an access drive. This will just allow access to around the array in the case of emergency. In addition to that, per the review, I believe, of the previous meeting, a request was made to increase the buffer zone along the property line to 20 feet. We have provided that throughout the entire property along the northerly, western, easterly, and southerly property lines.
There was some talk of you taking a chunk of, is it airs?
Yes, but at this point, it's not set in stone.
Okay.
So, but, and along that area, we're actually providing 24 foot along this area and then 21 feet along, 20 to 22 feet along the.
That's wide.
Little bit extra.
Did they decide to reduce the size of the array?
Not really. We did lose a few panels here and there, but because of the topography of the site and the general openness of it already, we were able to make it back up along the northerly, along the westerly edge of the property. So with that being said, the entire enclosed fence array area will be 21.2 acres of land per the bylaw. A protective covenant will be placed with equivalent size. So we're currently proposing a 21.32 acre protective covenant around the property.
And you know that that has to be negotiated separately. It's not, it's the conservation and the selectmen to that.
Yeah, we've, I've actually been, I sent the conservation commission, Carolyn, some language to go get started on the drafting of that, which she said she was going to look at and start discussing.
Because the permit says, you know, not, that you can't get a permit to build until you.
Right.
Besides that, that's pretty much the general gist of the project. If there's any more questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Okay, being that there's no one in the audience, does anyone at the table have questions about it?
I do, not that I expect anything to change, it's just from my own understanding. The, when you realize the driveway was going to go all the way up to the northerly edge of the property, why did you keep whatever's down at the bottom, down the bottom? Why didn't you move it up so it was a shorter driveway?
This?
Yeah.
For several reasons, we will try to keep the inverter array and battery pads away from the general house area, as a request of the landowner. Also, we do have to provide access to our detention basins for stormwater management, so that served a double feature for us.
Is that a noisy little devil?
They're not that noisy. They're, these people.
There is, there is in the bylaw, okay? If one of the neighbors were to complain, at the wat line, there has to be a certain level, decibel level, and you're going to be able to meet that.
Should, these units I believe don't make much more noise than a AC unit. In addition to that, they're, we actually have to dig into the ground a little bit in order to put these in here. So along this property line, there'll actually be an earthen area that the sound actually has to go through. That and combined with the vegetation screening along the edge, and the rapid die-off of the sound.
Not being too familiar with the site, and I know Randall wrote, this neighbor's across the street, Randall wrote it, are there not?
Ah, yes, there's a few of them.
Now, there's no buffer. Is the terrain such that they're not going to be looking at the?
So the inverter pads will be right here. There's actually a.
I'm talking about the array, the whole thing. Like we're putting a 20-foot buffer around the outside of the property, okay? But I'm talking about people from across the street on Randall Road. What will be in their view?
There are some quite high arbivores along the front of this roadway through here, so views from this area will be pretty well mitigated just from the existence of that. Once you get through here, you have the house and general trees and everything in the back portion, through the middle of the property, providing screening. And as you come down through here, she doesn't want to show it as well, there's actually a ridge that forms up through here. So the road actually dips down below the grade over here. So you're actually going down, so you have to look through a hill. In addition, there's also a wetland through here that has a lot of trees in it, so that can't be touched at all.
This is, the road is below the ridge probably close to 18 feet?
I think it's 36. Yeah, you're looking at about 12 to 18 feet in the area carries.
There's a stone wall on top of that.
Yeah.
So Roy is probably the only one that would really see it. He's the last house before the two fields that Potas owns.
Right, and.
Can you hear me?
Up, go up to the top house.
Up at the top. The last one, the last one before the big piece.
Yeah.
And that's.
And then, then after that, Potas owns the two fields that are across the street.
Yeah, from the house. And that area right out there was, kind of drops down, and it's wet, and there's trees all through there, and then it goes, goes up a little bit, and it's woods.
Okay, what would be acceptable to you as far as putting some kind of buffer at the front of the, requiring that some buffer be given for the people across the street? Now, that looks fairly narrow. You're looking 5, 10 feet maybe?
In which share, does there?
Well, I'm talking along Randall Road.
Yeah.
So if we were to say that a buffer of either side of the house, of how many feet, I mean, what's reasonable to you? I don't want to constrain you too much, but I also don't want the neighbors to have to look at something. And I understand, you know, that you, there is existing vegetation there, but who knows in 10 years what will be there, okay? What would be acceptable to you?
I would, I would, we could do something out here. I'm just not so sure how Dawn would react to that. You might not want.
Well, I'm talking about existing.
What about back here, something on maybe this edge of the fence? Like a mesh on the fence to block being able to see through the fence on this stretch of fence. So the woods come down here, this, this can't be touched, so this is going to be left all untouched, and this area is going to be left untouched. So it's, it's this area that's, if you can see through the existing stuff here and anything scattered along the back and through the elevation.
Okay.
This is the area, so I would say.
Jenny and Susan, I mean, you're more familiar with this area.
Yeah, and I, I agree that the part that he's marking out is the part that everyone's going to see, although mesh isn't really.
Pretty to look at.
Yeah, it's not in keeping with the end of the field.
But you've got the little, the old weed chop, the tree, that's, you're not going to see it through all of that and the barn, and there's trees behind the barn.
You have a section here between the road and the fence that's apparently going to be grass, it looks like. Could we not plant a row of varieties?
Along the fence. They don't want it to shade their solar panels, so it would have to be on the outside of the fence.
Yeah, on the outside, between the fence and the, and the road going down there. They're fairly narrow, small, they're not a.
Yeah.
Wide spring tree, but, but you could get some to grow up 10 or 12 feet, and it would cover your fence, it would cover the panels, they'd be able to see the road, which.
I don't think from that direction, you were more worried about the southerly not having it.
Yeah, plants like that, arbivores, we don't, it doesn't really, they're not going to grow tall enough, and if they do, we'll keep them at a certain height, they're not going to shade anything, so that's not a problem.
Right, and in other words, the sun is coming from this direction, right?
Yes, right.
So if you put something here, it's not going to block the solar panels.
Right.
Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, I mean, in the afternoon it will, but it's not going to be, it's not going to be taking up most of the prime solar.
Well, I think your sun is going to pass underneath.
Oh, look in here, he's got Christmas trees on the field.
Well, it does.
Right, but who knows when it's going to be in 10 years?
West is, is where you are, so it does come across, but I'm not going to worry about that at that time.
Yeah, probably not enough sun at that point to.
Okay, do you have any objection to us stating that a row of arbivores will be put on the outside of the fence to block view from Randall Road? Is that a problem?
No.
Okay, so how do you feel about that?
I think we should define it a little bit, just because I want to make sure that when, it's not, like, we should say, you know, typically we do like six feet on center, like, six feet on center.
Yeah, three feet.
Arbivores.
So a row of arbivores, six feet on center?
Yeah, that's, you know, whenever we do.
Well, when they mature, they will do their job, okay?
Right.
And a minimum, your chain link is going to be what, six feet?
Seven feet.
Seven feet? So a minimum of seven feet, that's reasonable?
I don't know what's, we, we just, I don't, when we buy them, they're at a certain height based on the right height.
Well, what if we said they had to be seven feet in three years?
I'm fine with that.
I mean, you're going to, the ones you would buy are going to be three or four feet.
Yeah, usually they come from the nursery at around this height.
I mean, I don't think anybody's too concerned about the fence being shielded the day these things go in, they're, we're looking long-term, and they're going to grow a couple of feet and then.
Okay, and we can even say something like expected to mature.
Sure.
And the.
And provide, how's that? So that, you know, the initial planting doesn't have to be, but you would have to plant and maintain those, you know, and it dies.
Yeah, yeah, of course, yeah. We could propose the actual, the actual locations of them on our construction plans as well, to show where they are. And I'm thinking, as long as I don't have to like, there's no sense of putting it back here, this is already behind trees, so I'm thinking right down like this.
Yeah, so essentially from the edge of the wetland, almost, a little bit lower than that, pretty much all the way down to the T turnaround.
So that's about 500 feet?
Yep.
Divided by six, so about 500.
So we want a strip of, and we'll do it to, you know, write it up to obscure the mature to provide, you know, ba, 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 like we did with the other one, for the, it has to be 50% non-deceduous, okay? Which they all are existing, okay? But who knows 10 years from now? And on this one, we'll say to screen the view from Randall Road, is that reasonable?
Yeah, I think that's reasonable.
Arbivores aren't that expensive.
I bet you can get a boat.
There, I just did the math, because I, when you said that, I was like, actually, what am I signing up here for? So it's about 80 trees, and they're about 300 bucks a piece, so we're talking about 25 grand worth of trees.
I don't know, have you been to Home Depot before?
You go to Calvecchio's and buy them wholesale or anything?
Yeah, like.
I don't know, I don't, we have the construction.
Home Depot, you can get one that's five feet tall to start with, okay?
Yeah.
I don't think they cost more than 50 bucks a piece.
About 70 bucks a piece.
No, if they cost that much, I wouldn't have planned them. Yeah, they're not more, yeah.
Okay, then no $300.
Those are fancy.
Yeah, I thought I.
That's the ornament's one.
Yeah, maybe.
Just while you're doing your magic, you could probably.
Mind that one, hold on.
Just invest it a couple of those Miracle-Gro spikes. Exactly.
Just look up at Home, Home Depot and see how much arbivores cost. And they have them in all sizes, I know I'm doing down the Cape of Wall with them, and.
Trying to buy the locally sourced organic ones.
Yeah.
I'm only kidding, that's, so that's fine then, if that's, maybe I was just way off.
You get Simmons right down Hudson.
Yeah, you have to pay more than 50 bucks here.
Get them taken.
Yeah.
But you could, if you're buying in that volume.
If you buy them in the volume, you get them cheaper.
But you know they are short.
Okay, does anybody have anything else that is not on this plan? Can you show us what you're expecting us to sign, please?
Yes. So I have, this plant that I just gave to you.
Okay.
And on the cover sheet of them, I have a signature block for the approval from.
This is vellum, right?
This is vellum, so what will happen is I'll take these back with me.
Yeah.
And I'll scan them and make copies.
Okay.
With the signature block on it.
And electronic copies.
Electronic copies. I didn't put it on each individual sheet in the past, every town's different unfortunately, but they'll either stick, put a signature or some kind of initial.
Yeah, I can initially other plans if you want, just that, so that they go, like I do with all the decisions on each page. So the only thing we might want to do is put some kind of an asterisk on there. Can we?
Do it more on regarding the upright, I actually do it on the sheet.
Well, I think that this one is going to be the main one, right? Okay, all right, if you wanted it on that sheet, but.
I guess whichever.
How about, again, we can sign that, but you've got a lot of notes on here, is there a place that we could put a note in some kind of thing on the plan itself?
Regarding everybody.
Well, we have to submit new plans, construction plans anyway, so we can, if we'd like, you just put it as a special condition on the site plan approval, that, that way it's known that it has to be done, and when we submit the construction drawings, we'll show both every, you know, the location of the arbivores.
Okay, because we're not under too much of a time constraint here, I mean, we don't have to sign this tonight, okay?
No.
What is the feeling of you folks?
Maybe just initial it on the paper there, and, yeah, just, my, my feelings is.
Write a note on the pig, on here, okay?
There's enough screening, it's already on this property.
Well, you know, it's funny, I've dealt with something that we have.
Three foot tall arbidity, $46, Home Depot, that's retail price. You can get wholesale cheaper than that.
I don't know why, I thought, I got advice, must have.
Well, you should be able to get them for like 30 bucks a piece.
Okay, that's reasonable, I mean, it's, that's reasonable, it's fine.
Okay.
I was about to go to the arbivory, they use the same.
Well, you might find somebody who locally grows them or something, just not across the street from me, because they'll die.
If you're willing to wait 10 years, I can grow a bunch of them for you.
So if the board would like, you can put a note on the first sheet, making out additional arbivores per special conditions under site plan approval.
We'll have to find somebody who writes better than I do.
I might as well put my degrees on this.
Okay, bring them over to Susan.
All right.
I'd like to give you what you need tonight and get it done with.
You needed an ink, and what do you want it to say?
Okay, what do we want it to say? No, per, so, what is, that's going to be the westerly?
Yes, the westerly.
Okay, a row of, let's see, we'll try a few things. A row of arbivores will be planted on the westerly side of the, of the chain link fence.
Like the driver, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, but.
So it's going to be like between the road and the fence.
Yeah.
Right on time to fence.
So along the fence to obscure, while we don't have to put that in here, we'll put it in the thing, but, a row of arbivores, and then we want to put six foot on center along the chain link fence.
Was the number of trees you came up with?
Eighteen.
Maybe, maybe arbivores planted six foot.
Did you send letters to everybody?
Six foot on center.
Six foot on center.
No, we were talking.
Because that's, they throw about three feet wide, they, and then, so if you put the center, it's three feet.
I know that's. I think it's about this, only 300 feet, where he is.
Sorry. All right, I wrote, row of arbivores planted on westerly side of fence, six feet on center along exterior of perimeter fence for approximately 500 feet to screen view from Randall Road.
Everybody happy with that?
Very nice. Anywhere you want it?
I think it'd be best, for sure, I would put it right in this area, actually.
Very unreasonable, sorry.
How about we'll put it over here, see note.
See note.
You guys, for sure, so, I don't mind, other, other times, I'm trying to find some others.
And then we might as well have everybody initial each of the pages. Does it say on the front page how many pages there are?
Yes, there is an index on that.
And there's, and it's, you know, so if everybody initials it, and they say that wasn't the right plan, well, it is. Make a motion as soon as we can stop. Now, you just build it and then you sell it, right?
I designed it, he built it.
He's, yeah, he's just an engineer, but yeah, most of the time, some, some we do own, we own a handful of projects that we developed and built in Charleston, but 90% share of this will be one that ends up getting sold.
Did you get your sold five megawatts?
We did, yeah, and we, because we had the permits, we qualified it in the state program, so.
How much money will that get?
I have no idea.
You know, I'm a biting cluster, that's all.
I was wrong about that.
Yeah, you were too.
But as far as, like, I don't, I'm not keen to the financials as much as.
Well, what does the, what does the grant say? What's the minimum and what's the maximum?
That's like what the person who owns the array will make, and it's based on like, adder to the base rate of the electrical sales, so whatever you get for the base rate, you get an adder for certain things and qualify, just because it's solar array, you're getting added for, you know, if you're in a solar.
Well, there is some concern, because I don't know if you, what, what do you do as far as taxes go?
Paying taxes on it?
Well, it's in 61A, right?
Yeah, we have to remove it, so we'll have to go through that process with the board to select it, to remove the lease.
And pay the back taxes.
Pay the back taxes, yeah, write a version of you with all that stuff. So then it comes out, and then it gets assessed, that property, real property tax, and then the pilot is normally for the equipment, the personal property tax associated with like the actual equipment.
So, but as part of the agreement, you're going to work that out with the assesses in the select, right?
Yeah, we have.
Because they got burned on the last one.
Yeah.
Are you aware of that?
I, I was, I know, I thought they, I just knew that the town had experience in the past with a solar developer, going through a pilot and even program, I didn't know they got burned, but we have a specific guy who does that for us, who does that negotiation.
I have a lot of practice.
This is a, a Jew is, that whole thing would state, if that had not gone through, would this be a viable program?
No, if, if we don't qualify in the smart program, then you wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to do it, it just doesn't, economically, you can't do it if it doesn't get the incentives. It's not, you need to do like 25 megawatts to make it worth it, if you're not going to qualify in the smart program. And we were worried it was going to fill up, and it's, it hasn't filled up.
Well, it didn't open up until Tuesday, right, that Tuesday?
No, it opened up on the 26th, and it closed, it doesn't close, but you have like a certain amount of time between the 26th or a week to submit your projects if you have had everything ready, and then you can continue to submit, but if you, if it did fill up on, on that week, we wouldn't have been able to get it in, and seven of the eight blocks have filled up within that week. So technically, there is still room, but if we were waiting, say, until, I don't even know when.
Till now.
Then now, yeah, we probably would have stuck it in at the very end, but we couldn't have been sure at the time if there was going to be that extra block left, so that's why we were pushing. So that's why we were pushing to try to make sure we had it for when it opened.
Do you wanna sign in a certain order?
I wanna vote first.
Oh, yeah.
Can we, I just wanna make sure I read it off of this. So this is a, you've got eight sheets, right?
Yes, or nine, two in the car.
Okay. So there's nine sheets, and prepared by?
Hannigan Engineering.
Dated?
Dated October fifth, two thousand eighteen, revisions through December eleventh, two thousand eighteen.
Okay. They're both eighteen, okay. Hannigan Engineering. Okay. Alright, so I'll entertain a motion to approve plans developed by Hannigan Engineering, originally dated ten fifteen, two thousand eighteen, and updated through December twelfth, uh, December eleventh, two thousand eighteen for site development plan solar energy array three forty-four Randall Road.
I move to accept the site development plan solar array on three forty-four Randall Road beginning from October fifth, twenty eighteen, through December eleventh.
Revisions through, yeah.
Revisions through twenty.
Is it October fifteenth or fifth?
I thought you said fifth.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Through December eleventh, twenty eighteen, with changes of abreviates.
With the changing of adding plantings?
Yes. Setting.
Okay. Did you, where she wrote, did you wanna initial it?
Yeah. It's on the sheet. May I change?
Okay. Just initial down there. Yep, good, the pen's working, is it? Okay, thank you. Alright. I'm putting my name back. Is there any further discussion on the motion in second?
In second.
Let's see, Danny was the first, and who did the second?
Jim.
I did, 'cause I have a lot of them.
It's a good thing. Okay. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Unless told otherwise, I'll take that as the unanimous vote. Now we can do the signing.
And the initial.
Right.
You let us hold it, right? Three hundred more meetings to go?
Seriously, it's like this, very fast, though, right now.
No. I'm used to it, though.
I feel used to it.
So is the town, just one other array in town?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's one on River Road.
And I will ask you to take these plans and make electronic copies and make. And it will go, Leanne, the electronic copy, she can share it with the town, so whatever. And you'll give us a printed copy.
Yes, how many copies would you like, one or?
How about three, one for the town clerk, one for your office, okay? And the building inspector should have his own copy.
Okay. We'll drop off, any plans tomorrow morning at some point?
Okay.
Is the town open tomorrow?
Well, the town's not open on Friday.
I work in a town where it's open one day. Oh, another town.
I thought it was a war horse town, and I didn't realize it was really the worst.
I didn't believe it was a no horse town.
You go through Dennis' two days.
Well, now you have a black one. This page, we should not see.
I'll take back all the old plans.
Is anyone here for the three foot before Randall Road? I take it a no? Okay, just one before we close in here and avoid someone to.
But definitely stay out of the town of your neighbors. Especially the ones that have the baby in the house across the street.
I'm just gonna write down.
I was like, gonna take the copies that I brought tonight back, or?
I wanna keep mine only because I gotta do a write-up.
And I am upset for the final. Must have been what y'all want.
I always keep. My personal file cabinet.
I just wanna.
Things like this, this is one of those things where somebody comes back fifteen years later and goes, ah. Who said they should do this? They took the file cabinet.
Not never. Yeah, right.
A lot of these projects end up being learning experiences for us as well, so. This is like the second one in town, the next one, we can reference your drawings and go, these guys did this. Why'd they do that? Why aren't you doing that?
Those guys did a great job on the site plans, too. So it's a good, good one to look at.
Well, some of the stuff we get, I mean, people come in here literally with, you know, eight and a half by eleven sheet of paper with some crayon drawings on it and go, we're gonna do this.
Oh, you did, sometimes folks think, I think, we're trying to be out of it, Charlie. But like when you went and got the letters, okay, from the different boards, basically either saying that they didn't, you know, 'cause otherwise, things get dragged out, and folks wonder why. And it's like, can you just?
That's kinda funny, I was reading, what these ZBA meeting minutes. And every time they have something, they send a letter out to all the other boards, and then every meeting after that, here's the boards it was sent to, here's their responses, every single item. All the different boards that they sent it out to, and what their response was in minutes.
We got more hours in every year. Do they all respond?
Alright, I like twenty hours.
Not necessarily, but.
Continue signing.
But they put that in there.
But I like to take a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Now we have a few minutes, we do need to wait till eight o'clock. As long as, you do have one of the large ones.
I do, yes.
Okay. Yeah, how about if we do meeting minutes, is that okay with everybody?
You said I could get another copy before we signed this, of the, before the meeting, the special credit, it wasn't fully signed.
No.
You say, wait, I, I misunderstood.
Okay, on the twenty-seven.
Oh, okay.
The last page of the one you had.
Right, I said, I think it's the seventh.
Pat had him signed it.
Yeah.
So the document that you wanna file with the registry of deeds is gonna include her signature. So what you need to do is get another copy from the town clerk. Well, she's gonna give you another page, and the other page is gonna say that the time has left and there had been no appeal. So you want that last page, too. So I would come in, in fact, you can ask her on the way out, if she'd like, coming twenty-seven to twenty-eight. Then she will give you a complete copy with that last page that says the time has expired. And, 'cause they won't accept it in registry of deeds until.
Okay.
And Pat's signature will be on it, 'cause she signed it tonight on her way in.
Oh, okay.
Alright, thank you. It's been a pleasure, gentlemen.
Yeah, same here, thank you very much, and looking forward to a good project.
Okay, does anyone have any question about, what may, meeting minutes are we looking at?
November fourteen, and then also they're, we're into executive session, twelve, executive session minutes.
Okay, but we didn't schedule a executive session tonight, though. Did you put an executive session on the agenda for next month?
And then I get confused by that, 'cause if we have to go into executive session, we can vote every time, and I don't take minutes for it. We're never gonna.
Right. Well, that's, that's true, you know. I don't know that.
But there was a vote in the motion. This was executive session last month, so why don't we have to go into executive session to approve that? Because we're working to get out of the executive session.
I honestly believe until, I'm just trying to think, we are resolved with this, correct? How many executive session minutes do you have for?
July, August, September, October, four and five, I didn't list it on that.
Okay. Let's print copies of them the next time. I just wanna see if there's anything in them that would make a difference going forward. They're all approved, right?
They were all approved, and we voted by the hands, too.
Do you know which dates, and we could just approve them in open session?
July eighteen, August fourteen, September fifth, and October ten.
October fifth and October? Okay, so would someone like to make a motion to approve and release the October ten executive session minutes?
So, well, it would be November fourteenth. We already voted for July through October.
Oh, okay, so, I'm sorry, November what?
November fourteenth.
Okay, so would someone like to make that motion for November fourteenth? Okay, you can abstain if you choose.
Okay, so motion to set the special meeting.
For November, and release the November fourteenth executive session minutes, right?
And release the.
Well, let's do that in a separate vote, okay?
Alright.
And you were here for that one, right, the fourteenth?
Me? Yeah, everyone was here but Danny.
Okay, so all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those abstaining?
Aye.
Anyone saying no? Okay, we have a vote on that. And then for the ones for July eighteenth, August fourteenth, September fifth, and October tenth, we'll move to release them.
We did that last one.
We release them?
Yep.
We're done? Okay.
And then there's regular minutes, open session, November fourteenth.
Okay, would someone like to make a motion on the November fourteenth minutes? This is the second.
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Those abstaining?
Aye.
Okay. Or voting present or whatever. Alright, that takes care of minutes. And still got a couple minutes. Alright, what else do we have, other than, we have budgets, but we'll do that afterwards.
We have no warrants, correct?
Do we have any warrants to sign, or did you take care of those? Okay, so as far as warrants go, there's nothing to be brought. Alright, do you have, are you?
Two forty-five.
Do you have the newspaper thing and all of that stuff to give to Leanne? Had a lot of the buzz.
Well, maybe not as funny as we think we do. We have the building inspector above the buzzers, so.
Leanne's just checking to see that everybody that's. We can do that outside, we got a couple minutes here. We just need to make sure that we've received either something back from the post office that says it was undeliverable or that they signed.
Just for everybody, there's a sign-in sheet on the back in the chair there, if everybody would just make sure you've signed in and so we have a record if you was here.
Okay, folks, I think it's eight o'clock. Open the hearing. I was a little confused, Mr. Cadoza. Because on the application, are you Marissa?
I am.
What is your last name, Marissa?
My last name, my legal last name is Evoncia. E-V-O-N-S-I.
But you're listed?
As Brison.
You're listed in the registry of deeds as Brison?
'Cause that's what I've blocked the property name under.
Okay, so I just, I saw this name, and then I saw the letter from the building inspector, and we posted it under Brison, because that's the property name.
Yeah, and then I have, I brought one of my letters.
You got two?
I kept the old one, for that reason.
Okay. First of all, how are we doing, Leanne?
Well, the newspaper ad is fine.
Okay, so it was posted twice and?
Yeah, and then I should have gave these for buzzers, which I don't have, that's. Yeah, and then I actually gave these for abudders, which kind of helps us.
Okay, we need to make sure that, did you get something back for everything you sent?
No, I didn't receive any, I didn't receive anything back. I didn't receive anything back in the mail.
You have, well, you have to get return receipt requested, right?
I wasn't aware that it was made on return receipt.
Um, I think the paperwork says that, so you sent letters, but you didn't ask for a return receipt?
No.
She said it's certified on the 27th, which is, we didn't want that.
It doesn't say return receipt anywhere. No, it's just a confirmation of delivery. There was no charge for return receipt.
You were very good. I saw on top of your petition that you put a copy of our application instructions, which you were given the wrong ones, but that's okay. And number eight, do you have it there?
Yeah.
And then number nine?
Okay, I guess I went off the.
And it requires a confirmation of delivery.
I didn't realize what confirmation of delivery meant when I sent them all certified and paid the money to do it.
You sent them certified?
I did.
Yeah.
Yeah. Especially certified, so I didn't want to. So. Four, five, seven. We did the, we did the, we followed the building inspector's recommendation for three hundred feet around.
Well, no, yeah, the assessors will give you a list of abudders for the different purposes.
Correct, and then we met with, correct, and then we met with the building inspector and we said, no, not to send it to all of those people. That it was, the policy was three hundred feet, so we did three hundred feet in, off of every far corner of the property. That's what we instructed to by the, by the building inspector. I specifically called.
Um, well, I think there's some miscommunication there because
That's not my fault.
we're legally obliged to make sure that all of the abudders, there are rules, and it's abudders or abudders within three hundred feet.
All abudders of?
Within three hundred.
Three hundred feet.
Which we did. We met with the building inspector on this.
Okay, folks, what do you think? Well, the assessors gave them a list and it's very comprehensive.
It's very comprehensive and we followed up on it as a result of that because
Right, and then she's saying that the building inspector told her that she didn't have to notify all of those people.
The inspector's not here.
I'm sorry?
So how many people did he take off the list?
Quite a few because only fifteen were sent out.
Well, we have two issues. The first issue is it was not return receipt requested. Okay, the second, the second is that not all of the abudders listed by the assessors were actually sent notification. So what do you think, folks?
I think I'm going to read the bylaw.
Well, the application instructions very specifically say the applicant or their agent or representative is responsible for sending with confirmation of delivery copies of the public hearing notice to all of the abudders on the certified abudder list in the last two weeks prior to the hearing. So seems to me the instructions say all the abudders on the abudders list.
Well, actually, it says certified.
Three hundred feet.
No, it says certified.
It doesn't say anything about three hundred feet. It says all the abudders on the abudders list, which is the certified list.
Certification of abudders list is given by the assessors.
Correct, and I, and I took that to understand that this is the certified list of the current residents that live on the list. But then I followed up with the building inspector to see because I believe it's the bylaws say three hundred feet. And so he specifically said three hundred feet from my house. And I said, I'm going to err on the side of caution and I did it at three hundred feet from the far, every corner of the property line, which is further into Brooklyn, just to be safe because I didn't want to like be in the situation. But he was pretty vocal about, or not, I don't want to say vocal, but.
Pretty adamant?
Well, no, I just, it, he was, I don't know, pretty confident, maybe is the word I'm looking for, that like the people that are past the three hundred feet don't, that's not the law. Or it's not, they're not needed.
Well, there's two, there's two issues. Number one, we are required to give notification.
Correct.
The certified list is spoken of, is the certified list from the assessors, so that's one issue. The other issue is we don't have any return receipts.
I guess because I don't send mail, I apologize.
Well, I, I appreciate that, but it would make the hearing illegal. And it, it would leave open an appeal of any of your neighbors based on the fact that they weren't received, didn't receive proper notification. So it goes beyond us, if you know what I mean. It could create, if and when we approve any special permit, in addition to us approving it, it goes for a twenty-day waiting period. And anyone can go in and object if they have any grounds. And I, I would say that not getting notification isn't the grounds.
What is our process for addressing the certified assessors list and the the miscommunication with like the building inspector and how to proceed forward?
Well, I don't feel that we can hold the hearing tonight.
So we got to do this all over again? Is this what you're trying to say?
It's just so much money. Like it's, I mean, I spent three hundred dollars in newspaper ads. And then to send like certified mail to the, just the people that I sent to is one thing. But then on top of it, now it will be return receipt, which would add another expense. But then to send it to another hundred homes that are not within the three hundred feet just seems.
We can only, we can only go by.
I mean, how does the assessors list get created? Like, how does that happen?
Okay, why don't you ask one of them if they're willing to come and put their feet to the fire here?
Because the driveway to the actual property is not within the three hundred. Like the driveway of the entrance.
We have control over certain things.
I know, I know, and I'm not trying to be difficult. I apologize for being emotional, but.
And again, you're leaving yourself wide open. Well.
Instead of getting into it?
I don't want to get too deeply into the hearing.
Nobody down there?
Well, folks, I don't know, but I, if this isn't the feeling at the table, please tell me. I don't think we can hold the hearing this evening.
Okay, so what's the next process then? Do we have to start all over again? Is that what you're trying to say?
Well, the notification was invalid, okay? So yes, you could, I mean, what newspaper did you advertise in?
Worcester Telegram is that twice or for a month and then Clinton.
Well, the next time you might want to look at, there's an alternative and that's the Clinton item.
I did, no, I did have both. I did both.
Oh, you don't need to do both.
Well, I did, just to be safe.
Yeah. And I think one is less expensive than the other. But I, I, I can't see how without getting return receipts from folks and knowing that everybody on the certified list wasn't notified, I can't see that we can hold the hearing this evening.
Okay. All over again then?
Um, in essence, yes.
Thank you.
And we haven't opened the hearing yet. So this is just for informational purposes. I would ask, well, I think you've already, we can fix things too because your last name was incorrect. And I'd love to ask you questions, but we can't do that. If anyone has.
What can you?
Hearing hasn't opened.
The hear, we haven't opened the hearing, okay? And technically, we can't converse. Does anyone have some kind of, something they want to say and I may have to cut you off? Please.
Yep, first off, is Brook Lane considered one neighbor or, I'm in the first building in there. So I'm member five. I got notified.
Do you have a separate deed? Do you have a separate deed?
For?
Your property.
For my house, I do, not for the property, no. Because it's one, so it's one property. So everybody in the whole place has to be notified.
According to the certified abudders list, yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Can we just, yes, sir.
Yeah, this is the second hearing I've been to for this. And both times, the town has given these people the wrong information. The first time, the building inspector gave them the wrong information about the equipment they could have. Now they got two different stories from the assessor and the building inspector. What is the town going to do to help these people?
I sympathize.
Well, I don't want to sympathize. I want this problem corrected.
Well, I agree.
You're supposed to be able to help the residents of this town and it hasn't been done in their case. And I think that's pretty disgusting.
We, well, we.
It's not in our control. It's not in our control.
Well, whose control is it?
Well, I think you would need to talk to the selectmen because we have.
Selectmen, building inspector, the assessors, the zoning board?
We're here for, we are the zoning board of appeals. So we come here for special permits. We don't have anything to do with the assessor's office. We don't have anything to do with the selectmen.
We're also volunteers.
Now, this is like working with Congress. Nobody's responsible for anything.
Okay, I guess.
Well, maybe we can at least clear that up.
We have a vacancy on the board if you'd like to come volunteer.
I've been on enough boards in this town.
I, I'd just like to say, we give them a list of instructions.
Yes.
Okay, when they apply for a permit. And on there, it says that you've got to get,
Return receipts.
You've got to have, with confirmation of delivery, which is basically return receipt.
Right, now I guess, I apologize for not knowing mailing though. I guess I wouldn't have realized that because I thought certified mail was, I don't know, confirmation of delivery because you get a tracking number on it. So I guess I just assumed like the people have to sign for it. To me, that's confirmation of delivery. I didn't realize something needed to be sent back to me. And I apologize, but maybe in the instructions that could be clearer.
But it says documentation of this mailing and delivery receipts for the abudder notices must be submitted to the zoning board on the night of the public hearing.
I guess my, in my mind, like having it sent certified and people having to sign for it was like confirmation of delivery. If they didn't get delivered, they would have been sent back to me.
Well, how do we know, I, I, I mean, I sympathize with you, okay? But we.
I, I know for the future now. I'm just saying, maybe for people who don't understand how the mail, maybe could be just clarified in the instructions.
Okay, what, what in the instructions would have helped you?
It says be sent return receipt and receipts must, I don't know. I'll let it go.
No, no, seriously, if we want to help somebody going forward, including yourself, what do you think it should say? That, other than what it says, I mean, what can we add to it?
I don't know. I took it to the post office. I told him, no, and the guy helped me do it. So it's, it's fine.
Okay, the only guidance I could give you is that the assessors have produced a list of abudders. And those.
I will follow up.
For our, for our purposes, I would go back to the assessors, okay? And I would ask them why they included all these names, okay? If, if you're curious, because that's, and Leanne, if you just asked the building inspector, you know, if he intervened? Yes?
Um, we had this same type of hearing last year, but nothing has changed. They're still doing business. They've added more equipment. The property itself hasn't been landscaped. So this is just kind of a, a non-event because they're, they've been carrying on business since last year from that property. So I guess my question is what, what is the purpose of this if nothing, and I did, I did contact the building inspector and haven't been even get a reply from him. So I guess my point is what, what is the point of these variance hearings?
My understanding, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, you're under a cease and desist order.
Yeah.
So you cannot operate out of that location.
Who is it bothering?
I'm sorry?
Who is it bothering?
You know.
I'm in the first building. I don't even hear them. Not bothering me.
We're here in mom and dad's, we just need, we are here just to do permits and take.
No, I, I realize that. I realize. It just gets frustrating.
Excuse me, can I say something?
I think we're probably.
I just, listen. I know you just said, she just said that there was no landscaping down there.
All right, can I just tell you, we cannot take that kind of testimony at this time?
Yeah.
We can talk about the notifications. We can talk about the assessors. We can talk about the rules. But we don't want to get into doing a hearing without. Okay.
I, I did look up certified mail and it does say upon request electronic verification verification that an article was delivered. So there.
There is electronic too, but you have to pay for it and they get it and it is email to them.
Okay, you didn't know all this?
Yeah. So it's the same as return receipt, ten cents cheaper. You get it electronically and she gets a receipt. She can print it. It's two different ways of doing it.
Do you want to change how it's written?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
Does this mean that only the people that are three hundred feet from his property have to be notified and not the whole complex?
The assessors gave a list and from what I'm seeing, Jim, you have it there too. It includes everybody in the, everybody, okay?
It starts with eleven Brook, well, it starts with.
It starts with the first.
Sixth Brook Lane and goes to ninety-nine Brook Lane.
And last time, we did notify. The last time we were here, we notified.
That's correct. Everybody, the notification, everybody, every person.
This time, because it was so expensive, we read through the, I don't know if it's the zoning laws or what I looked at, but that we read through the different laws for abudders with regards to like a residential property versus a business property. And it said very clearly three hundred feet. So then we followed up with the building inspector to say none of these people are within the three hundred feet. The driveway is not even in the three hundred feet, so we went off the three hundred feet of houses that are.
Right, I suggest you bring this up with the assessors. They are the ones who make the decision. The list of abudders is one and more than a half page.
Yeah, there's a hundred, there's probably a hundred people on it, absolutely.
We only have sixty-three.
No, but these are their folks.
Right.
Like, to the left and behind us into Mall Borough.
I'm going to suggest the next time you do this...
It's that much?
Give me a notice to put by our mailboxes.
We asked if we could do that, and we were told no.
No.
Who? I'm the chairman of the Association. Hello!
Because I would have done that, but I...
May I suggest, and this is just... That's between you two? And I think you might want to get her email.
So, can I ask you something?
Yes.
Let's see if we can do that instead of sending everybody off.
You can't do that.
The law is clear.
We'll just follow the assessors. It's not worth arguing about it here.
Okay.
Well, the only other alternative is if you do a form letter and have each abutter sign that letter saying that they have been personally notified.
But...
No, that's not...
It's not. And many of the abutters don't live there in the winters, so they're not there.
That's correct.
Yeah.
They can send the letter back saying that they...
But you notified everybody the first...
I'm sorry. Excuse me, ma'am. Excuse me. Did you have something you wanted to say to us, or was... Were you, like, conversing among yourselves?
I wasn't at the last one. I wasn't notified. I don't know what this entails. Something about heavy equipment being there? That would make it a disturbance to the area? I don't know.
This is online.
Okay.
At townofberland.gov. And there is a chapter, and I'll tell you which one it is.
It's actually townofberland.com.
What is it by?
Townofberland.com.
Yeah, townofberland.com. The section that... There's a home-based contracting business on page body six. And what they're coming in for is a request for home-based contracting business. The things that have to be met are all listed in here. You can read them online. You can get a copy to your folks. We can even give you a Xerox copy if you wanted to. There's a definition in the back of the book that defines who can apply. And there's another section for site plan approval. And it says what has to be on the site plan that they're asking for. We can only, even if we give it to them, we can only give it to them for five years. And then it has to be renewed. Okay? So, I would suggest that you go out online and take a look at what's allowed. It gets down into how many square feet they have, and how many vehicles they can have, the size of the vehicles they can have. All of that is listed in a table of home-based contracting business. Does that help?
I think we had that the last time.
Uh huh. I should read it. Should get it and read it.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, if there is a motion, entertain not to open the hearing due to faulty notification. I would accept that motion.
So would you.
Is there a second?
Sir.
Is there any further discussion on it?
I am... I just want to... If you discuss something different than the certified abutters list of what needs to go out, please get it in writing from whoever tells you to change that list and ask them to certify it.
We should email the building inspector and ask them.
You're a wise man.
I should... I knew it. I said it. I go, we should have gone in writing.
I have a feeling you have visitors in the morning.
Joe will, his public window hours are into 10.
Is there anything else to be said on the motion? What we're doing is, we're not opening the hearing without prejudice. And the folks are going to have to re-notify everyone.
Can I just ask one quick question? Are you going to make them send certified return receipt requested mail to everybody in the community? That costs a fortune.
How did they do it the first time?
They just sent regular... Regular mail notification the first time.
No, we certified it.
I still had to sign for it.
Yeah, you certified everything.
What they need... What they need to do is they need to talk to the assessors, okay? You can talk to the assessors and say, you know, we'd accept one, or I... I mean, that's something... We get a list, okay? And what Leanne has to do is make sure that there's...
Each town has...
You know, within the timeframe when you post in the newspaper. And you don't have to post in two. You have to post it twice.
I did it in two, because the first paper didn't meet, like, the deadline from when Leanne sent it to me.
The Clinton denied them. It was too late to get it.
It was too late to post it.
And I think what we can do... I want you to spell your last name for me.
E. V. O. N. S. I. O. N.
Okay. And you were formally... Okay, so, just the way the notice is going to go, okay?
It's... I knew it matched whatever the property is.
We'll give you a new notice. Because you're not going to be under timeframes, you can use the Clinton item exclusively. It has to be published in a newspaper of general circulation in the area. I know they're cheaper, but you wouldn't be able to meet their deadline. But now you will, okay?
If we got the hearing notice in the time Leanne had heard.
I can't see any reason why... I can't give Leanne a couple of things to change on the one that you've got. And it would be the date and time. And it would be adding this second last name.
Have it a week tomorrow.
Yeah.
Because there's only a couple of things you're going to have to change on it, right?
You got the assessors' list. And you just got to...
Just send it out.
They... They may want to discuss it with the assessors or whatever.
I'll just send it out. Just send it to everybody. Get it out of the way.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the motion? If not...
I'm sorry. Can we make the next hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
We have... As far as I know, we're free for January, correct?
Deadlocks tonight, but they get it in tomorrow.
Yeah. Well, we'll be...
Right, because you... They still have time to get it. Put it in the window.
Actually, they could probably take this and change the date. I mean, they could get down... It's not nine o'clock yet, is it? No.
No.
They could go down... You could go down and file it tonight. You could get a new copy of, like, this, or just change the date.
I guess my concern is, is I don't know if we could get it in the Clinton item tonight.
No, no. You don't have to get it in tonight. It has to appear in the newspaper two weeks prior to the hearing.
No, it needed to... Five... No, it needed four weeks and two weeks.
No. There was no way you met four weeks, because you didn't...
First, two weeks prior, and then... So, the first notice has to be two weeks prior to, and then the second notice has to be during...
Can be after that anytime.
Right after that, during that two weeks.
Yeah. So, it's got...
If I get it to you tomorrow, you have to get it.
They just... They take it on a Wed... When is it, Wednesday or something? In order to publish it on Friday?
Clinton item is Wednesday. So, the next time it would be available to be published would be next Friday.
Which would be well before...
It would be well within the timeframe.
Within the timeframe. Now, you realize that anything that's said tonight is not a guarantee of how we feel about the project, or how your neighbors feel about the project.
We feel bad for making him come back.
Well, I... We feel badly, but I think you need to... I mean, is there anything we can clarify for you beyond that? The first thing we're going to do when you come is we're going to take and check off to see that everybody has been notified, okay? The next thing we're going to do is check the newspapers to see that the date was... That the first notification was at least two weeks prior to the hearing date, okay? And then we get into the hearing. Then we get into the meat of it. And the list of abutters will be on your here. And what the assessors give you is what our expectation will be. So, if you want to negotiate with them and talk to them, or ask them why, or whatever the case may be, that's up to you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there anything further? If not, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. We're terribly sorry. I'll work with Leanne in a couple of minutes, and we'll just modify the notification.
Thank you.
Sorry, folks.
Sorry. My email. Oh, thank you very much.
I am warning you to suggest that when you do this again, send me a quick email.
Excuse me.
With a quick overview.
Oh, we're on camera, sorry.
I think we're pretty done. Travel, you can turn the camera off. Thank you.
No. No.
I'm sorry. He just had such a great smile.
Okay. Let's just do it without a heck of a lot of comment.
Okay.
We have... We're going to add a new category.
We're going to add a part-time wage category for Leanne at eight hours per month for doing our...
Attending night meetings.
Attending night meetings, inviting decisions, and...
I don't write decisions.
Forwarding this email.
Emails, and all of the... Of the above.
Administrative work.
She's getting...
And it will be flexible. If she doesn't need it, if there's sometime during the summer that she doesn't need it, then she doesn't need it, right, Leanne?
Yeah, I'll look for it for what I...
It's a total of 21, $2,155.20.
Could we...
Which we are going to add to the 2020 request.
Could we make it $2,200, just to...
Yeah, we can make it whatever you want.
Is everybody okay with that?
Go for it. Are you allowed just to look on camera?
Okay. All right. And then we have other things.
We have our regular office supplies for $100. Other supplies, $100. Travel, $80. Training, $320, for a grand total of $600. So, it'll be roughly $2,800.
All right, I just want to ask, $320... What is it, $75 to go to the planning training every year?
Correct.
So, that would cover how many people? Four or five? That would maybe call... Cover five people.
So, so, this year, we've only, I don't know...
Four was...
We only $24, I think, so far, with five.
Four was one for 300, then it's $150, 300.
Okay, $320 is fine, because it makes up the numbers round.
Is that all year?
Yes.
Yes. And we've not... So far, we've only spent $44.98.
How can that be?
That's all we've spent.
The fiscal year started July 1st.
Yeah, but we haven't gone to the planning thing yet.
Okay, it goes through the line.
I'm going to go back.
The fiscal year started July 1st, so from July 1st to now, you have to spend...
This doesn't start until next July 1st.
Correct.
So, how much did we spend?
So, how much did we spend last year?
$319.62 on one occasion. And that was it.
Well, $319 would probably be gas or something, yeah, okay.
Right.
Mileage?
Yeah. Because I think one person drove, and so...
Yeah, we all had to give them something, yeah. Right.
Okay.
I can tell you who did.
Jenny did.
Yes. $75, $75, and Jenny's was $94.62. For around $319. And we had a balance of $235.48 that we turned back.
So, we're looking at a gross budget of, like, $2,800?
$2,800.
Anybody have any comments on that, or whatever?
Can I get that breakdown again, Danny?
What's that?
$100 for office supplies. Can you give me that breakdown?
$100 for office supplies. Other supplies, $100. Travel, $80.
Okay.
And training, $320, for a grand total of $600. And with the $2,200 for there, it brings it to $2,800.
Okay. I'd like a motion to...
Approve this.
Approve the budget.
The request.
Budget request.
I move to accept the FY '20 budget as listed at $2,800.
Is there a second? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, I'll take that as a unanimous vote.
Now, do you want to sign this, or do you want me to keep signing that?
But it's fine with me for you to sign it, but, I mean, if you're uncomfortable, I'll be glad to.
I'm more than happy to.
What you might want to do is keep your ear to the ground, because the FinCon might want to ask us...
Of course, and that's...
Yeah.
If they want to meet with us, then, fine.
Well, I'd rather have them meet with us than not meet with us. Can we help you?
Yes, the town clerk has a question, sorry. Is it a whole new application with a new application fee, or is it just a...